To all who are joining us for the State Board of Education workshop. I do call this meeting to order and ask that Casey Griffin on our staff call the roll to establish a quorum.
Mr. Corrigan. Mr. Darnell. Mr. Eby.
Here.
Mr. Edwards.
Here.
Mr. Ferguson.
Here.
Mr. Jensen. Mr. Jensen.
Mr. Jensen was trying to get in.
Ms. Kim.
Here.
Mr. Kraus. Mr. Kraus. Mr. Morrow.
Here.
Madam Chairman.
Here.
Madam Chairman, you have seven members present.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the number.
Seven members present.
Thank you. We have a quorum present and we are duly convened. I do have something I need to read for everyone so that we can go into the Committee of the Whole. Pursuant to Section 8 of the State Board Meeting Policy 1.400, workshops are meetings of the State Board sitting as a committee of the whole. Section 1, subsection E of the same policy, in accordance with TCA 8-44-108, requires all votes taken during electronic meetings of the Board to be taken by call of the roll. In accordance with this policy and the law, I move that the State Board dissolve itself into a committee of the whole for the purposes of conducting our workshop. Is there a second?
Second.
Please state your name when you provide the motion. Second.
Bob Eby, second.
Mr. Eby provides the second. I do want to let everyone know that this does require a roll call so that we can move into Committee of the Whole. Casey Griffin will call the roll. You will say aye if you agree, nay if you oppose.
Mr. Corrigan. Mr. Darnell. Mr. Eby.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Ferguson.
Aye.
Mr. Jensen. Ms. Kim.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus. Mr. Morrow.
Aye.
Madam Chairman.
Aye.
Madam Chairman, you have six ayes.
Thank you. I declare that we are in the Committee of the Whole for the purposes of conducting this workshop. I'm now going to turn to our Executive Director, Dr. Sarah Morrison, for a few opening remarks. Dr. Morrison?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and welcome, members and members of the public. We are happy to see everyone. Of course, we had hoped to be in person for our July meeting, but understanding the situation that we all find ourselves in, appreciate your willingness to engage with us on the WebEx platform for our quarterly meeting and our workshop today. I would just encourage you, as we're beginning to dig into the agenda, our members especially, to speak up. I think we didn't have any trouble with that at our last meeting, but sometimes on a virtual platform, you may be tempted to sit on your comments, but we've got some really important and interesting agenda topics today to discuss, and your voices are always valuable and important in these conversations. So please don't hesitate to speak up for fear of your mute button throwing you off. And certainly for tomorrow, the same thing applies. We've got a full docket of agenda items and look forward to really rich discussions, both today and tomorrow. There's some weighty topics, as we know, on the Board's plate, and so we just appreciate all of your engagement as we move through the agenda today and tomorrow. Just one additional note in terms of scheduling that's changed slightly from some of our prep calls. Commissioner Schwinn has been invited to speak today in front of Congress, so she'll be testifying in front of one of the subcommittees at about 11, or I think 10:15 Central time. So for that reason, we've divided up her presentation that was originally scheduled for today, and Megan McElroy here in a minute from the core offices will be giving us an update on the Continuous Learning Plan submission and review process. And then Commissioner Schwinn will be with us tomorrow morning, and we'll kick off our agenda with an update on some of the health and safety considerations that I know she and the Governor and others across the state are really working hard to pass through to districts in terms of some of those really tough decisions that are beyond the Board's purview but weigh heavily on all of our minds. So I just wanted to note that in terms of the Commissioners joining us tomorrow, and we sure appreciate Megan joining us today to talk through with us on the Continuous Learning Plans. That's all from me, though, Madam Chair. I'll turn it back to you and look forward to the discussion today.
Thank you for those very important remarks, Sarah, but I also, before we get started, I just want to give our presenters their usual reminder to please state your name and title for the record. And for our Board members, when you have questions or you're going to make a comment, I think it would be helpful if you state your name so that we also have it for the record. And Amy already issued a recommendation to all of us to keep our phones and our devices muted so that when others are speaking, there is no background noise. So with that, we're going to turn and go into our presentations, and the first one, as Sarah mentioned, is Ms. Megan McElroy with a COVID-19 Response in School reopening update. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's a pleasure to be here with you today to update you about the work we've been doing to support districts in developing their Continuous Learning Plans in accordance with your recent policy. Let me, before I state my name and get into my presentation, just make sure I can actually share my screen. That will probably be the hardest part of this whole process. Okay, well, Sarah, will you let me know if you are seeing my presentation?
We see it, Megan.
Fantastic. Great, so thank you again for having me. My name is Megan McElroy. I'm the Chief Statewide Support Officer at the Department of Education, and in that role, I oversee our eight regional district support offices that we call our core offices, and they're leading a lot of the support around the development of these plans with districts, which I am thrilled to be able to talk with you about this morning. At the Department, we always ground our conversations in our strategic plan, best for all. And in terms of the CLPs, Continuous Learning Plans, we are very thankful for the work that the Board did to outline the CLP policy because we see a real clear alignment and focus between what we're asking districts to consider in developing these plans and the key priorities of the Department's strategic plan. So the components that you all identified for the CLP really demonstrate a clear focus on high-quality academics, whole-child support, and family support, and support for educators. So we're very grateful for the work that was put into that policy. Today, I plan to share with you what has happened since that time from a process perspective, how we have supported districts in the development of these plans, and what we're seeing and experiencing in the field as they work through this development. So those are kind of the three things I plan to touch on with you this morning. So just as a refresher, I'll provide some brief context here. You'll recall the intent of the CLP process is to ensure that LEAs and charters have clear plans in place for learning in the event that it needs to happen remotely this year. The goal is, of course, to ensure that districts and schools are prepared to offer much more than they did this past spring during the unexpected closures that they experienced. So in that regard, the focus of these plans is on remote instruction. We at the Department are not responsible for reviewing health and safety plans for in-person learning, though certainly, as Sarah said at the beginning, that is a topic of great concern and interest, and I'm grateful that the Commissioner will be able to be with you all tomorrow to talk about some of the work in that space. But finally, you recall the seven sections that I have listed here are what were called out as requirements in the Board-passed policy, which is what we have used to then ground our planning processes as a department. So let's talk about, this is kind of the operational, like what have we done since passage of that rule and policy? So since that time, we've been working swiftly at the Department to implement the process. We started by designing the rubric, making sure it aligned to what was in the policy to ensure we're maintaining the integrity of that, and so that we could kind of start with the end in mind of what we wanted the outcomes to be of these plans before then designing the actual template that districts would use to complete it. So again, we started with that end rubric so that we could have the clear outcomes in mind. We also wanted to make this as useful and authentic a process as possible, and we know that in the past, districts have tended to focus on writing long narratives that explain what they intend to do and when they interact with the Department in terms of submitting plans to us. In this process, we really wanted to take a different approach. We know how much districts have on their plates right now in trying to plan for the school year, and writing up long narratives for our purposes did not seem like the best approach in order to achieve that goal of a useful and authentic process. So what we decided to do is really focus on the artifact-based process, to allow them to share with us the artifacts that they already have or that they actually need to create in order to actually execute their plan. So for example, rather than having districts explain how they would meet the 6.5 hours of instructional time, we asked them to just submit their schedule for students in each grade band. Or rather than, you know, describing how they were going to deliver PD for teachers, just send us your PD schedule or the materials that you used in that PD. So we're really trying to make it a practical, useful process for districts. As we worked through developing the rubric through an artifact lens, we leveraged our best-for-all superintendent engagement groups. We have those groups that meet monthly with subsets of superintendents to focus on academics, whole child, and educators, and we leveraged those engagement groups for feedback and input as we were developing the rubric. Once we had the rubric mostly fleshed out, we then designed a very simple template. These are both on our website, if you have not had a chance to see them, with tables that districts fill out and only very brief narrative sections that we encouraged them to use to reference their artifacts, so to say, "See attached plan on pages six through eight," so really trying to keep it simple for them. I think it took districts a bit to wrap their heads around this way of submitting a plan to the Department. It's different than what we normally do, and I actually think this experience will help inform how we think about, quote, "planning" with districts in the future to make it a bit more authentic and practical. But once they got used to what we were looking for and realized that they could just submit documents they already have, I think they were grateful for that option, as opposed to having to put together a bunch of things just for us. We are using ePlan, the ePlan platform, for submission and feedback. Two reasons. One, it saves us all from emailing documents back and forth with as many plans as we have to review and all the associated artifacts. Email was not going to be a viable option. And then, second, it allows us to comment back and forth with the district directly in the platform. And then finally, in the first two weeks of the window, we developed a suite of responsive tools and resources to support districts. Lisa Coons, who is our Chief of Standards and Materials, met regularly with the core office directors on my team to ensure that they were fully normed on the expectations of the plan so that they could support districts appropriately. And we used that time to then surface from those on-the-ground folks what districts would need to help them actually put these plans together. So these resources included things like samples that we pulled from district plans that had been posted online. For example, if we saw a student's schedule that met the criteria, we would share that as a resource with districts. We created some look-for documents, some fillable templates to help them think through portions of the plan. We also created a document that's been particularly helpful to districts that describes what an instructional day might look like in different grade levels and how they might pair content delivery with instruction. And I'll talk a little bit more about that at a later point. I'm not sure how you all normally entertain questions, but I am happy to take them throughout, so please feel free to jump in at any point, as well as certainly at the end, we will have a chance for questions. So we've talked about the process that the Department went through to develop the plan and the rubric and some of the support we've provided, but I want to share a little more about those supports to districts as we've been particularly busy in that space for the last several weeks. I won't read all of these to you, since I know you have the slides and they're on your screen right now, but I will highlight a few of them for you. First, we have been fielding a ton of on-demand questions and technical assistance requests from districts on a daily basis. So we're really able, through the core offices and leaders at the Department, to provide concierge kind of, you know, question-and-answer responses to districts and to provide technical assistance explaining the rubric as well as thought partnership. We're kind of all hands on deck for this support, and core offices are out in districts daily, meeting with them to provide technical assistance as they develop their plans. In addition to this on-demand support, we have held daily office hours for districts to get guidance and support on particular sections of their plan. I will say, though, these have not been widely attended, as we had hoped, but from both the on-demand support and office hours, we are then leveraging our three times-per-week superintendent calls to answer frequently asked questions and highlight promising practices as we see them come in. So we're taking the questions that are coming up most frequently through that on-demand and office hours, and then turning them back to all superintendents on our three times-a-week calls to make sure that that information is getting spread across the state. As I said previously, we've created a variety of tools and resources based on feedback from our core offices in the field around what would be useful. And finally, when plans are returned to districts with feedback, and we are starting to move into that process, and revisions are needed, we're deploying our core offices to support the district in refining their plans to make sure that upon second submission, they are in the place that they need to be. So this support, I will say, has been a top priority for the Department for the last four weeks. In some ways, it feels like it's all we have done, and we truly believe this is one of the most important things we will do this school year, and so we have leveraged nearly every avenue that we have to provide communication and support as districts walk through this process.
Megan, this is Lillian. I have a question. With the superintendent calls, are they allowed to ask questions during those calls? Or are you just strictly counting on all those other methodologies for them to be able to get their specific questions answered for their district?
Sure. We do not offer, like, live Q&amp;A on those calls because there's so many people on them, but we do have, they do chat in questions during those three-time-a-week calls, so they put them in the chat box, we capture them, and then we try to answer them on the call, the following call. So we meet Monday, Wednesday, Friday. If they chat in questions on Wednesday, we capture those. In a lot of cases, we need to do some legal research or find the, you know, make sure we're providing a clear response, and then we try to address that for all on the Friday call, for example.
Thank you for that. And I want to make sure, because there certainly is a very comprehensive approach to how they may direct their questions and challenges toward you. I was still trying to look to see if you had a method for someone having a direct conversation to address some questions, because I'm wondering, too, since a lot of the districts are not availing themselves of the opportunity, some of the opportunities you provided, I'm just wondering if they're really getting what they need and if that might be an opportunity for phone calls.
Yes, ma'am. I act, I believe they are. So that's happening through our core offices. We told them at the beginning their core office director was their point of contact for CLPs. So they are doing outreach, they have the, they are texting, calling, emailing on a very frequent basis to their core director, and then the core directors are also reaching out. So they're doing proactive outreach to all of their districts to offer to meet with them, to find out what they need, what questions they have, how is it going? And so we are both pushing in and giving districts an opportunity to have that direct one-on-one, as you said, because on so much of this, they need to just be able to have a conversation and really get in the weeds and, you know, talk through what they're thinking.
Well, thank you for that. I can certainly give a shout-out to Dr. Fox from the Upper Cumberland. She's been very proactive in this particular region, and I'm sure that it's very much the same in the other parts of the state. So thank you for that. I'll have more questions in the end, so I'll turn it back to you. Thank you.
Great, I appreciate that feedback on Dr. Fox. Thank you. Okay, so I really wanted to, I'll talk about some of the challenges districts have encountered in a minute, but I wanted to first share some of the exciting practices we've seen in some of the early plans we've looked at, and I'm really excited to be able to share some of this with you today. I do want to just give my disclaimer that I'm not intending to say that these districts have exemplar plans overall. We have not fully rated and scored them yet, so that may or may not be the case. But what I do intend to do is highlight some very specific practices that we're seeing in these plans that are encouraging, so some bright spots. But again, I don't want to imply that these entire plans are meeting every expectation of the rubric. That is not something I could declare at this point in time. But we'll share a couple of promising practices that we're seeing as we've looked at them. So I'll start with Johnson City. For some context, they are doing a family choice approach, which we're actually seeing in the back of districts across the state. So where, this is where students have the option at the start of the school year to attend in person or remain enrolled in their zoned school but do all of their instruction virtually. So that family choice model is one we're seeing pretty common across the state. What I loved about this plan is that it is very clearly a student-first plan. They're, first, they're using the same materials, instructional materials, virtually as they are in person, and have placed an appropriate emphasis on K-2 with instruction in those virtual spaces being mostly live synchronous instruction in those early grades, which we know is so critical, whereas upper grades weave in more additional and appropriate asynchronous opportunities. So they've really prioritized our earliest learners in making sure that they're getting that as close to in-person experience as possible. Their plan also exhibits really strong parent communication. As one of the artifacts they've provided is a remote learning handbook for families, and it does a really good job of helping families understand their options, what instruction will look like in the virtual space, as well as expectations in that virtual space for grades, attendance, how much learning time they should expect, and the parent's role in supporting students. So they've done a really great job communicating those options for families and helping them understand what to expect. In addition, they've thought through plans for all student groups, so they have explicit plans for their English learners, their students with disabilities, they've thought through homeless, homebound, and more. So they've really been intentional about all of their students and figuring out how to ensure that they receive the services they need. So they're doing appropriate screening, IEP meetings, they've outlined plans for how all of that will happen virtually. And then, finally, counselors will be having regular check-ins with students who are learning at home. So again, the student-first or student-focused nature of their plan extends to even whole-child support and ensuring that kids who are virtual have opportunities for that kind of support. So we really liked the intentional thought that they've put into serving all kids in equitable ways and giving families appropriate choice.
This is Bob Eby. Those are great examples. Is there a particular avenue that you share those promising practices with the other districts so they can, you know, not reinventing the wheel when you find things like that that are strong?
Yes, sir. We have actually shared a couple of these same examples on our weekly superintendent calls, and then also as we are finding, kind of in a similar narrative form like I just did here, and then also as we're finding artifacts that are really strong, we are pushing those to the core offices so that they can support, use them in supporting districts as they are developing their plans. So we're trying to make sure, we're, yesterday in our superintendent call, we also started kind of a pro tip segment where we're saying, you know, we're noticing a lot of the plans are leaving out this part of the rubric. Make, you know, here's how you might address that, make sure you're paying attention to that. So we're trying to pull some of those things that, promising practices, and also things we're seeing folks missing, and giving them some resources to support that. Thank you for that question. I'll move into Loudoun County, but certainly happy to come back to these with other questions. So Loudoun County is also starting the year with a family choice model where parents can choose between that in-person instruction and virtual learning. For their virtual model, they're using a purchased online curriculum, but they have really thoughtful plans for how to pair it with live daily instruction from their Loudoun County teachers. They have also already done an alignment of that online material to the Tennessee Academic Standards. And just to touch on that artifact point, in this example, they submitted their spreadsheets with that standards alignment that they had already completed. So rather than trying to describe to us what they've done, that's an example of how they just share those artifacts. Loudoun County has been really creative in the lower grades as well, which is one of our big concerns in these plans, to ensure that students get the high-quality, live, foundational literacy instruction. So they've hired additional early literacy virtual teachers. So they've staffed up in that area to ensure that they can provide small group instruction live on the computer with kids and one-on-one support for students using the district's foundational skills curriculum. So they're prioritizing and protecting that instructional time for early literacy virtually the same way they do for in-person students. They've also been really thoughtful about their plan for the beginning of the school year and recognizing that they likely need a different approach should they have to close the district entirely and shift all students to a virtual space. So in that scenario, they have said, "We will not continue to use that purchased online curriculum." If every single student is at home and all of our teachers are available to support that virtual learning, they will shift to live direct instruction by their students' classroom teachers with schedules that are comparable to the in-school setting. So I like how they've been thoughtful about different virtual approaches based on what scenarios they might encounter in their district and not just making it a one-size-fits-all. In addition, they've been intentional about planning for teachers to continue their regular practice of collaborative planning, so their teachers getting together to prepare with the materials they're teaching with. They do this within grade bands and vertically across grade bands, and they have plans to continue that in a remote space if needed. And then finally, they also added that in the case of full closure, if they are able to, depending on health conditions, they would like to try to bring those earliest learners and students with disabilities in for in-person learning. So that would be a priority if they feel they're able to do that, which we thought was particularly thoughtful. Okay, just pausing to see if anyone wanted to ask about that one, but I will move finally into Power Center Academy. So this is a K-3 school that is part of the Gestalt CMO Network in Memphis. They are doing a virtual start to the school year. As they start the school year, though, virtually, they are planning to use the curriculum that they use in traditional in-person instruction. What was really unique about this plan is the level of intention that they have put into teacher support and preparedness. They submitted a variety of artifacts that show how they're preparing teachers for virtual learning. In particular, they've done a really good job of working with teachers to analyze missed learning and develop an iterated instruction. missed learning and develop an iterated instructional plan for this year. In particular, we were impressed with the different and appropriate approaches they're taking in math versus ELA. I think they've gone deeper into it to explaining how they're going to mitigate missed learning from last year than a lot of other plans we've seen. So, what they're doing in math, for example, each grade has created a list of the standards and major work of the grade that was missed at the end of last year. And then, they've identified the standards that are related to that content in the current grade level. So, they said, "Here are the standards kids missed last year, and here are the standards," let's say that was sixth grade, "and here are the standards in seventh grade that connect to that learning, that knowledge that they need to have around the standards they missed last year." And then, they're revising their scope and sequence to be able to weave those in together in a just-in-time approach rather than trying to reteach everything at the beginning of the year. So, they're really being thoughtful about how do we connect the learning they didn't get last year on this topic to what they are about to learn in grade-level content and make that a more authentic learning experience for kids. They're taking a different and more appropriate approach in ELA, which is in alignment with our current vision for high-quality ELA instruction. So, there, they plan to start the year with their high-quality materials on grade level. And rather than going standard by standing standard, they're planning with teachers, ask them to not think about what standards did my students miss, but rather to say, "What knowledge and skills do my students most need to access this grade-level text?" So, they're starting with every little text, identifying the knowledge and skill students most need, and that way, they can also just-in-time kind of double down on some of those concepts and skills from last year that students might have missed. So, they've been incredibly thoughtful about how best to approach that in service of what's best for students and their learning. They've already done this PD with teachers in June. They actually sent us the PowerPoint that they used as an artifact. And they scoped out together in that PD session their first unit for the year. So, in June, teachers were already prepared with their first unit and how they were going to scaffold in some of that missed learning from last year. So, we were really impressed particularly with that one and how they thought about working with their teachers around potential learning gaps. Districts have been working really, really hard on these and frankly are quite stressed with all that is on their plate. So, I'm thrilled to have the opportunity to share with you some of the good work that they're doing in this space.
This is Larry Jensen. I'd ask you a question if I may.
Sure.
On the Power Center Academy, starting 100% virtual, how have they addressed the connectivity for the families? I'm sorry, I may have broken up. So, how are they, are they 100% connected? All the students? They all have laptops or whatever? How are they doing that?
Yes, that's correct. They have gone one-to-one as a district or at the school CMO community and are providing internet hotspots as well to families who might need internet access. We're seeing that in most places across the state.
So, that was my follow-up question is, how are you doing that with places like a Lake County or Unicoi or wherever, where internet or broadband connectivity is not what it should be necessarily for, to have a student, as it might be in a Memphis, Nashville, Chattanooga, or wherever?
You're segueing perfectly into my challenges slide. As you will see, the last one that districts are wrestling with here is connectivity and devices. It's certainly been a topic of conversation since even the spring. I think districts realized quickly then this was the number-one problem to solve, right, in this phase to be able to go virtually. Most of them are using their CARES Act funds to be able to purchase devices. Most of them are also doing Wi-Fi hotspots. There are places though, as you mentioned, like Lake County, where even a Wi-Fi hotspot doesn't work, and districts are taking a variety of approaches there and trying to get creative on how to serve those students. I will say, and I'll share a couple of those. But I will say, in most cases, it's still a small number of districts or of students who are experiencing that particular challenge. And so, we're encouraging districts to take more of a scalpel approach there than a ax, you know, and figure out ways to reach that small number of students differently. So, some of the things they're doing, for example, are, they can provide the devices to kids, and if they don't have internet, they're either downloading video lessons and content and assignments onto flash drives or onto the computer itself and allowing kids to take it home and do the work so that they don't have that internet issue. And then, students can then complete their assignments, and they're creating kind of return processes, right, in a health-conscious way where students can bring the device back, get the new content, upload their assignments, et cetera. And then, in terms of meeting kids for instructional needs, they're doing one of two things. They're either, again, a small number of students, bringing them into the building to meet with teachers, talk through the assignments that they did, get help from the teacher, or they're doing phone calls. So, a lot of places are doing daily calls with students, one-on-one, to talk through the work that they've been doing and provide them that individualized support. So, those are just some of the ways that we've seen districts trying to tackle that issue.
Well, in my district, I would say that 50% of the children do not have broadband connectivity that would support that. And, you know, even in a German town or Arlington or, I've heard as many as 30% in those affluent communities. So, it concerns me just that, you know, you've got a group of kids who have it all, they're connected, so on and so on, and you've got a whole other group of kids that are going to struggle just to be connected.
Yep.
And that's a big challenge, and I state the magnitude of that challenge, but it's an issue that I think we need to talk about in a, you know, in a larger context.
Yep. I agree that it's a significant challenge. Districts are working really hard to combat that. We are working with the governor's office to provide additional resources in that space. I'm sure the commissioner can speak to some of that as well tomorrow. But it is the, it is the number-one challenge to solve, certainly, and it seems reasonable to think that it's something we can tackle.
This is Bob Eby. I'd like to add on to what Larry is saying because numbers also can be misleading. I know for a fact that the way they count connectivity is if one home in a block, they do it by blocks. And if one home in a block has broadband, then they assume all homes in the block have broadband, and that's not the case. So, when the numbers say, you know, I think in the urban districts, 90% connectivity, or in the rural districts, 60% connectivity, the actual numbers are about half of that. So, I think this is an issue that we really need to continue to bring up and work with the state on.
Yes, I agree. Appreciate that.
Megan, this is Sarah. Oh, sorry.
Sarah, I was just going to add really quickly that as we are reviewing these plans and when they get to approval, what we are doing is cataloging. The core offices are going to lead some of this effort to catalog what districts are doing in these spaces. And so, I think how they're handling devices and connectivity is certainly one of the things that we want to capture. And so, we will be able to, at some point in early fall, report back to you all on what districts are doing, both from an instructional lens and some of the other aspects of the tool or of the CLP, including how they're handling devices and connectivity. So, we may have, I may be able to share more at that point, or someone will, about some of the ways that districts have approached that. Sorry, go ahead, Sarah.
Great, great. No, and I know we're coming to the end of our time, but I so appreciate you giving this update today, Megan, because I think this is at the core of what the board is responsible for moving into the school year and understanding how districts are experiencing the submission process. The planning process is really important to our members and to our staff. So, thank you. I'm also really intrigued by what you were describing, particularly in the Power Center plan around that just-in-time. Like, what do students need to know to access the grade-level content? Because I think that is also sort of at the crux of this, you know, instructional gap issue that all of our districts and students are going to be facing coming back this fall. So, I think Bob was the one that asked the question earlier, but just would love to continue to collaborate with you and your team about how we can help support the best practice sharing, also in real time, like, what do districts need to know, you know, to make these instructional plans happen in a way that's going to maximize learning for students, given that we're going to be short on time and playing catch-up, but don't want to necessarily go back and reteach all the old content and put off the new content for too long. I think there's, you know, some really important strategy there that districts should be learning from one another quickly. So, let's just stay in conversation about that. I think it's going to be really important to support districts in understanding that, those techniques that seem to be effective in accessing grade-level content.
Yep. Appreciate, would appreciate that. That's great. I think for the sake of time, I will move to the last slide, which is just to show you kind of where we're heading next. As you know, plans are due tomorrow from districts, and we will be working pretty swiftly. We've received 28 plans already, and we've made this priority number one for all staff members involved in the process. And so, review teams under the direction of a chief at the department are reviewing the plans and providing feedback to districts as needed. And as I said earlier, when feedback is provided, core teams are then tagged in to be able to help support districts in making those revisions. And again, as strong examples and artifacts surface, we're sharing those with districts as well who might need to make revisions but might need an example, right, to help them think about it differently. And finally, we're committed to working with all districts to ensure that they receive final approval of their CLPs by September 30th. So, that is where we are in the process. I appreciate the opportunity to share with you how this work has been going over the last month.
Megan, we really appreciate you being here with us today and sharing the level of detail that you could share with us that you have at this point in time. I know with 28 plans already submitted and probably way too soon to have assessed any of those, do you have any early concerns besides the challenges that you had listed on the second to last page? Anything that you're hearing from your core offices with regard to the angst or concern about how they'll get this done and the timing or anything in particular? I don't want to put words in your mouth, but just any final remark regarding any concerns with getting all those plans, not only on time, but that they will be rich enough and have all the right elements to be approved?
Yeah, it's a good question. I mean, it has certainly been a challenge for our districts. I think those who had been moving in this space and had plans that they had started thinking through, it's been a bit easier. Once they realized they could just upload some of those things they had been working on and kind of literally write on them and annotate what they're doing, they breathe a little bit of a sigh of relief. I think there are districts who have not, had not moved into this instructional space yet, right? They were still thinking about health and safety. What are we going to do about masks, PPE, you know, social distancing, hand sanitizer, and are we opening, are we not? And the ones who were still in that space and hadn't started to formulate their instructional plans, it's been a bit more of a lift, and we've really had to help them start to think about that. I think some of the things we're supporting them most on are this idea of instruction versus content delivery. So, making sure that they're not just doing packets or self-paced modules, but that there is some component of live, you know, daily instruction with students, with a teacher. So, that's one thing that we're finding ourselves kind of pushing on a little bit. The other is supporting them in really thinking about all learners. So, they've got their basic plan, and then we're having to kind of come back and say, "Okay, so how are you, how is this serving your students with disabilities? You know, what are you doing for your English language learners?" So, that's a piece, too, that I think we're having a lot of, we're finding ourselves having a lot of conversations about. And then, of course, getting creative and problem-solving around the devices and technology. I think those are the big pieces that we're spending the most time kind of having to work with folks on.
Well, thank you for that critically important work. Thank you so much to you and your team. And Bob Eby has something he wants to add.
Before you cut off, one common question I get is how you define the six-and-a-half hours a day. And are you, I know you said you're not telling the districts how to do the job, but is there some kind of general definition, particularly for the virtual students, of the expectation achieving that six-and-a-half hours a day?
Yes. So, we have actually put out a document that I will share with board staff in follow-up to this because I think it will very clearly answer your question. It's called "What is an Instructional Day?" And actually, it was the most clicked-on resource on our website last week. And it actually defines, we haven't set very specific parameters around content delivery versus instruction, but it defines what we mean by both of those terms and that students need an age-appropriate balance of those things. And we actually developed schedules, sample schedules in kindergarten, elementary, middle, and high in a virtual space. We've done two schedules, actually. One is if you're using purchased content, you know, from a vendor that we know a lot of districts are. And one is if your teachers are using their own instructional materials, and we've given them samples of what that day might look like. So, I think that you all might be really interested in seeing that, and I'll pass it on to board staff.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Megan. Any final questions for her? Okay, let's move on. Thank you for being with us today. Great presentation, great work. Now, we're moving into the legislative update by Mr. Nathan James. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Everybody sees that with no problem? Everyone can see that?
Yes, yes.
Great. Well, as we know, this has been an extraordinary legislative session this year. We've certainly, I don't remember any point in time in the last 22 years that I've been around the legislature, a time when everything was cut off right from middle, certainly not due to pandemic illness. So, for sure, there's been a lot of firsts during this session. So, let's get straight into our State Board of Education legislative priorities made law. I'm pleased to say that we had three bills going into the session that we were hopeful to get passed, and we were successful in passing each one. And they all are mostly around the educator licenser discipline process. So, our first one is public chapter 629. Now, this one expanded the list of offenses for which the state board must automatically revoke an educator's license upon the educator being convicted. So, if you looked at the law prior to the 1st of July, you had things like felony drug offenses, murder in the first degree, murder in the second degree, aggravated kidnapping, especially aggravated robbery, aggravated rape, rape, aggravated sexual battery, rape of a child, arson, for example. But in going through the requirements, for instance, another one would be sexual exploitation of a minor involving more than 100 images. So, but of course, as you all as board members know, if you have someone that's convicted of sexual exploitation of a minor and it's 99 images, that doesn't make that particular candidate any better suited for the classroom. So, working with the legal team, we brought this legislation successfully, which added things like aggravated assault, reckless endangerment, vehicular assault, willful transmission of HIV, criminal exposure to HIV, female genital mutilation, domestic assault, aggravated vehicular assault, death threats against school employees. Now, that's a misdemeanor, but because it involves a school employee, it certainly needed to be on that list. Arson and aggravated arson, burglary in every degree, child abuse and aggravated child abuse, providing handguns to minors, felony weapons offenses. So, we were able to go through and clean up what were some pretty sizable holes in that statute. The second one we went after is what became public chapter 734. And this allows the State Board of Education to seek reimbursement for the cost of proceedings in certain contested case hearings related to educator misconduct. It's not that the board would do that on every occasion, but there are times where the facts are extremely clear-cut, and to take it to a contested case hearing for the defense especially is more an exercise in some obstruction. And so, this simply allows the board to go after And so this simply allows the board to go after the cost of those hearings, whereas up to this point in time, the taxpayers had to bear that cost regardless of how clear cut the situation was. So our third bill, which became public chapter 733, allows the State Board of Education administrative subpoena power for licenser misconduct investigations. Keep in mind, this power is already enjoyed by 25 other boards, including the podiatrist's board, but it was not an authority that we had. Also, every LEA has this power. And this is going to be especially useful because we've had trouble with certain districts not being willing to send us videotape evidence of altercations between students and teachers until after we have taken it to a contested case. So this, and in that case, the administrative law judge would have to issue those subpoenas. So that was the State Board of Education legislative agenda for the year. Questions on any of those three? If not, I'll proceed to related legislation. So public chapter 527, this is by Senator Gresham and Representative Lafferty, authorizes the LEA to provide career-based experiences. The LEA's high school students allow students to participate in any available career-based experience and establish partnerships with industry and local businesses to provide career-based experiences to these students. This was just more of a clarification and an explicit authorization of what is very much already happened. Public chapter 532, moving on, requires a TDELE to develop formative assessment question banks that are aligned with state mandated summative question banks and release those to the LEA. So that, that was something that had been pushed for for some time. Moving forward on to the next three, these are examples of what we call sunset bills. Now, for our newest members, remember that in Tennessee, if the agency or the board or the commission or whatever is a creation of the General Assembly, it will always have a sunset date on it. The concept being that if the agency or the council or compact in this case is not sufficiently responsive to the General Assembly, that if they take no action, then the entity will cease to exist. It is a process that's administered through the government operations committees in both houses and provides a fundamental check and oversight. In this case, 537, 544, and 555 were the Advisory Council of Students with Disabilities, the Dyslexia Advisory Council, and then our membership in SREB, which is by Interstate Compact. So an Interstate Compact is a process whereby states can band together to accomplish certain agreed upon goals, but an Interstate Compact must also have a congressional charter and be authorized by the Congress of the United States. Obviously, members, stop me anytime, anytime you like. So public chapter 576, this, if you read through it, it would be very easy to get confused with all of the language in this bill. This was brought by the Comptroller of the Treasury to ultimately answer the question, does the local school board use the revenue estimates that the county commission creates or does the local school board have the authority to make its own revenue estimates and create its own budget based on those and attempt to bind the county commission in that way? This bill makes it clear that the county commission rather than the LEA sets those revenue estimates and that the LEA must use those revenue estimates in the creation of a budget. Obviously, Bob and others, folks who have been around the Tennessee education process for a long time knows that with the exception of city and special school districts, this is always a point of tension between the county commissions and the local board of Public chapter 587 defines grow your own educator preparation programs as partnerships between ed prep providers. These must be approved by the Board of Education, the State Board, and one or more LEAs are required to coordinate the program for the preparation of licensure. It also allows a waiver of average class sizes within those programs. Public chapter 601 has the effect of making clear that students with IEPs and 504 plans may have their accommodations for their TCAT testing as well as their end of course exam. But the caveat placed in this bill was that those accommodations could only be used if it doesn't substantially skew the results of the test so that the accommodation wouldn't defeat the purpose of that. Public chapter 603 went through and kind of did a cleanup on a bill that was passed in the previous year. It authorizes the director of schools or the designated to remove a student from an alternative school or an alternative program under certain circumstances. Further requires then a minimum suspension of 10 or more days being placed before tenants at an alternative school or an alternative program becomes mandatory. Last year, we had a bill that required those to be done automatically pretty much for any length of suspension and it proved to be very, very challenging and difficult to put into practice. Public chapter 618, Senator Massey's bill specifically authorizes LEA administrative offices to be in a federally owned building. That's for their specific situation in Knox County, however, it is applicable statewide. The next one, I believe, was Representative Freeman's first bill and requires a family life curriculum to include instruction on the preventing of dating. Senator Swan brought this next bill, public chapter 748. You might remember Senator Swan is from East Tennessee, had previously served in the House of Representatives. Certainly, our interaction with him at the state board level is he's been a large proponent of Tennessee history, a very involved when we went through our social studies process. But in this case, this allows the LEA to escalate truancy issues in the juvenile court based on parents being unwilling to cooperate. Prior to this, they, all these districts had to go through a three-tiered process, kind of prove it over and over again, step by step, that the parents were unwilling to cooperate in the truancy issues. So moving on to public chapter 708, and Madam Chair, I am trying to make up a little bit of time from our last presentation. This, this bill makes sure that the, that a child who is reporting sexual abuse does not end up in a situation where they, where the child has to tell the story first to a teacher and then to a guidance counselor and because of FERPA, that doesn't end up being shared with the DCS investigators. One issue with, especially with child sexual abuse, is that every time the story has to be told, details can get changed in the mind of the child. And eventually, with each little change in detail, defense counsel is able to use those changes as things to point to in an attempt to exonerate the potential perpetrator. So this bill makes it clear that there is annual training for LEA staff, but also puts DCS very much in the driver's seat, puts the school counselor very much in the driver's seat, so that you don't have the child re-traumatized over and over and over again, just in the process of escalating that to the proper end. Next one revises the operations of the Textbook and Instructional Materials Commission. This, this bill was finalized, that is to say, the conference committee report on it was finalized the last night of session. It was the subject of several legislative hearings and it has the effect of limiting the authority of the chair of the Textbook and Instructional Materials Commission. It removes the commissioner of education as a voting member and it gives you, board members, the State Board of Education labor authority previously granted to the commissioner. Also, the State Board of Education is given rulemaking authority to effectuate this law. We'll say you will see rules and processes on this forthcoming. Any questions on that before I move on to items related to COVID and the book? Okay. So our next one is public chapter 628. And effectively what this bill does, it created a one standardized allergy form created by the Department of Health and the Department of Education, technically created by TDELE, but in conjunction with the Department of Health. Basically, you have a situation where there are a bunch of different forms right now that students have to fill out for this allergy or that allergy or, and this just makes that a lot clearer. The public chapter 651 is actually the Appropriations Act. This is what was passed in March. As you all may realize, the budget was considerably altered before it took effect finally. So I am, I'm going to deal with that in just a moment. Public chapter 652, this is the bill, one of the final bills that the General Assembly passed prior to going on their two-month COVID-related reset. It did a number of things that you board members are very familiar with. It made changes on testing requirements. It went through and waived accountability. It went through and required the State Board of Education to create emergency rules regarding the finishing up of the school year that we just went through. It was under the authority of this act that we met and went through that process. And we'll say that you as board members took action on this under the law a mere nine days after it became a public chapter. And in that point in time, your staff and you as individual members reached out to educator groups, cross the superintendents, educator stakeholders, local board members, the SBA in a pretty extraordinary way. And I want you to know in my conversation with members of the General Assembly that they recognized the great amount of work, not only that the staff did, but individual members did in order to kind of take the temperature and take cognizance of exactly what was going on in your respective congressional districts. So I want to give a hats off for that. Very significant legislation and strong work there.
Nathan, this is Bob. Refresh my memory, COVID appears to be going longer than any one of us ever expected. Is there a sunset or does public chapter 652 end or does it have to be extended or what's, what's the date on that? Thanks.
Well, the sunset of the bill, that is to say, the portion of it, I believe, as I'm recalling, I don't have the public chapter in front of me, so I can certainly bring it up. It has an automatic appeal date at some point in time next year. But keep in mind that the language of it was written most specifically about the 1920 school year. Okay? So there are certain provisions there that although the act itself isn't, isn't yet expired, yet the work that had to be done under that act was most relevant to the previous school year.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. So this next one, public chapter 717 by Senator Hale and Representative Dixie, who's another one of our freshmen from metroline to Nashville, just cleaned up some of the language around when a teacher had to accept an offer of employment from the LEA or that is to say the window where they can do that before they would enter into a contract and potentially get into trouble if they took another job. That's, that's effectively what that goes through. Other related legislation that's specific to us and its implication today especially, and you'll notice the next few bills do not have public chapters assigned. I put the finishing touches on this last, just Friday, I believe. And at that point in time, neither of these two bills have been assigned public chapter numbers, but they have both been signed by the governor and to the law. Senate Bill 2097 is a higher education bill. It's called a FAST Act and it is extremely expensive. There are counterparts in the Higher Education Commission this year have done a tremendous amount of work. They've been in a similar spot to you folks as state board members in that they've had to go about the emergency rulemaking process. They've had to undergo the same sorts of processes for higher education that you all have had to for K-12. And what's extraordinary is I think, I think we're the only state that has had no tuition increases coming through this year. The most relevant portion of this bill to you as board members is that the requirement for our joint THEC, State Board of Education, meeting is removed with the passage of Senate Bill 2097. Of course, with Mr. Kraus on our board and Dr. Morrison on the Higher Education Commission Board, to say that any two agencies in state government are any closer would be difficult. I think that the partnership there remains strong inside that. Again, specifically related to COVID-19. Senate Bill 1974 is a legislative initiative created specifically to create what's called the Tennessee Educational Recovery and Innovation Commission. This is designed to examine both the short and the long-term effects that the COVID-19 pandemic and the natural disasters, you know, we've had any number of tornadoes and other things that took place just so far in the year 2020. And this, this bill creates a commission with the governor, with the governor and the Speaker of the House of Representatives, each appointing three members. This has a sunset date of two years from now. It'll produce a report at the tail end of this year and then another one next year. But this has a most unique charge to it. This with, there are a number of boards and commissions, task forces and so on, looking at the immediate effects. How do we get back to school? How do we get back to normal? This bill contemplates the idea of a retrospective look back. Just put yourself in, in our shoes or the shoes of other board members five or 10 years from now. What do we want to look back and see that has changed in the processes of education to innovate as a result of what we have gone through this year? So this is going to be, it has every chance to be some real out of the box thinking, some potential innovations that come and some modernization. So when the, when the principals make their appointments, this will be attached to the State Board of Education and they are tasked in the law with making recommendations to you, the Higher Education Commission, as well as the General Assembly. So they are not an authoritative body. They are a body that will do some out of the box thinking and help us and those bodies chart a course for education in the next 10 years.
So Nathan, this is Lillian. With this bill taking effect July the 15th, do we have any indication of when the members of that commission will be appointed? of that commission will be appointed?
I will tell you that it has been a matter of an extraordinary number of conversations. From my conversations with the speakers and their key staff, as well as the education committees, this, there are any number of folks who are very, very desirous of serving on this commission. Other organizations and agencies that want to bring that around. I am expecting and hopeful to have a full slate of appointees in the next 30 to 60 days. I know that Chairman Mark White has been a tremendous proponent. He was the sponsor, he and Speaker Pro Tim Dunn on the House side. You might remember that both Senator Gresham and Speaker Dunn are retiring from the General Assembly. So with them leaving, you're losing over 40 years of legislative experience, and you're also losing these two kind of warriors in the education reform process, both of them having played key roles in the transformation that's happened. So I think you can expect that they will put a good deal of urgency on what influence they can wield with the appointers. And I know that the speakers in the Governor's office certainly take their responsibilities on this very seriously.
Well, I'm certain that they do. And I believe you said that a report would be due a year from the bill date? Or is it a year from when they first convene? What are we talking about in terms of timing there?
So according to the statute, the first one would be actually before the tail end of this year. So you're looking by the end of December, an initial report would come out trying to take cognizance of the overall impact of the COVID situation and the other disasters. So, you know, I expect to be input from, considerable input from TDEO, considerable input from LEAs and stakeholders, as well as the Higher Education Commission and the Higher Education Committee.
Well, we'll certainly be talking more about this as a board since it's under our set of responsibilities, if you will. So thank you for that. Let you move back on to the rest of the agenda.
No problem. No further questions on that?
Not for me.
Moving on, and this is one slide that I like to include every year just to refresh our members of exactly how the budget cycle works in Tennessee. Remember that, you know, of course, our fiscal year starts on July 1, ends on the, you know, the tail end of June. And all of the process of planning and estimation begins nearly immediately. Now, why is that so important to the State Board? Because we have attached to us, and the Chair and the Vice Chair both serve on this committee, the BEP Review Committee. And in the last several years, the BEP Review Committee has changed its process so that in between the July and September timeframe, where you're seeing that planning and estimation is going on in that bottom right-hand portion of the budget cycle, the BEP Review Committee is able to come up with its top five priorities for education funding for the next year and get it in front of the folks who make the decision. Always prior to that, the BEP Review Committee would do its report on the 1st of November, and it would be more of a laundry list of potential expenses. And it was already too late every year by the time that report came out. So this is, this is a useful thing to understand as members. When we take a look at the budget this last year, remember that our economists were suggesting a revenue shortfall between half a billion and one and a half billion dollars, while the administration and the General Assembly fully funded the BEP formula, closed the books in FY 2020. They had to freeze hiring and purchasing, and they were able to close shortfalls with non-tax revenues and agency savings and reserves. But I will tell you that the Legislature and the administration have both looked at the rainy day fund as the absolute place of last resort and have not had to get into that. One of the last things done before the Legislature left was to take a substantial chunk of money and put it into the rainy day fund. There were $397 million in cuts in March, $283.7 million in additional cuts following that. If any member is interested, I can give them a complete list of all budgetary adjustments. And with that, Madam Chairman, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take questions.
Are there any questions or comments for Nathan?
Madam Chair, this is Bob Eby.
Yes, Bob.
These are questions, just actually two comments. One, with regard to the Tennessee Education Recovery Commission. I think back in Tennessee, they have a Tennessee Quality Award, this pattern after the National Malcolm Baldrick Award that's based on continuous process improvement. And I see this commission is actually executing that. So I think it's really exciting that that commission has been established and look forward to the report it provides. Secondly, I would publicly like to thank Nathan for all he does with the legislator and legislative affairs. I know every time I speak with members of the Legislature and I talk to him about Nathan, just the respect that he brings to the Board and the outcomes that he brings to the Board, I think speaks volumes of how he is respected and how this Board is respected. Thank you for that, Nathan.
Bob, thank you so much for sharing that. I actually had some comments myself, and I want to echo what you just said. And the time that he spends on the Hill, certainly keeping up with all the legislation that is related to education, and then the tracking of those bills for our behalf and reporting back to us as he's done today, cannot underscore how important that is to our work. And thank you. Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Nathan, so much for your great work in that regard. Any other questions or comments for Nathan?
Madam Chair, let me just respond to this one moment. You know, this is pretty easy when you have some very dedicated colleagues. You know, when I can pick up the phone and call anybody that works here, and they've all got a ton of other things going on, but they know, especially during session, that all right, this call, probably I need to take. I need to be able to get an answer for a legislator and make sure that that partnership is strong. And they all do that. They all do that. I wouldn't be able to keep things straight if it wasn't for Casey, Elizabeth Tellus on our team to keep the communications strong. This is a great bunch to work with, but also let me be clear, and I'm not blowing smoke on this either. Our Board members themselves are doing substantial outreach, and that is incredibly important because this body and its function, you know, were very much defined in law and created as a legislative move. And it's no small thing. When you all take that time to do outreach, when you do the legislative visits, when you're doing the days in the district, every little bit of that is extremely helpful. I certainly, we wouldn't have that. You could have the best representative on the Hill in the world, but if we don't have our foundations and our functions working well, that doesn't matter so much. So it's very much a pain thing.
Thank you for those comments, Nathan. I agree with you wholeheartedly, but I can also say that when I first started serving on this Board, that was not the case. There were silos, and it was really very difficult to break down those silos. So building those relationships has been critically important. And yes, it's a team effort, and there's no one individual in particular that can take all the credit, but certainly you have been the point person designated to lead this particular effort for us. So you have to take a compliment. I know you don't like to, but you deserve it. So thank you so much. We are going to take a five-minute break and come back promptly at 10:26, 10:27. Thank you all.
We'll get started in one minute. We're just a couple of minutes behind schedule. And Ms. Amy, you're all queued up. We'll give it to 10:27.
Okay.
Just to be sure everyone's back. It is 10:27. I think we can go ahead and get started. Ms. Amy Owen.
Sure.
Stateboard indications, strategic goals, and master plan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Amy Owen, Director of Policy and Research for the State Board. I'm very excited to share with you today the Board's new strategic goals for the five-year period of 2020 through 2025, as well as our master plan that will carry us through the first year of that period, the 2020 through 2021 school year. Before we move into that, however, I do want to take a look back at where we've been at our previous five-year strategic goal period. Five years ago, the State Board adopted three strategic goals, and I'm going to describe progress toward each of those goals to date before moving into our goals for the next five-year period. Our first goal for the last five-year period was around achievement on the National Assessment of Educational Progress, or NAEP, which was that Tennessee will rank in the top half of states on NAEP by 2019. And you can see that in three of the tested areas, we have in fact met that goal, in fourth and eighth grade science and in fourth grade math. The dates here are the most recent NAEP administrations for which we have data. Science has not administered every evaluation cycle as math and reading are. The state was in many areas in the mid-40s in rankings in 2011, experienced a significant gain in 2013, earning us the title of fastest improving state in the nation, and since that time has maintained those gains and had smaller, more incremental progress. So we've been able to achieve this goal in about half of the subjects that we were hoping for, and we've noticed in particular that reading is still a strong area of need, and that's going to be reflected in our goals and benchmarks for the next five-year period. Our second goal was around the ACT Average Composite Score, or a comparable score on the ACT. The goal there was to have the average ACT composite score for students be a 21 by the year 2020. Currently, our average score is at a 20.0 from the 2018-19 school year, which is the most recent one for which we have data, which was a slight increase. The reason that 21 was the goal is that that unlocks the HOPE Scholarship and a lot of additional opportunities for students to pursue post-secondary education. So while this may seem like a minor increase, we did actually have 7,000 more students take the ACT in 2018-19 than in 2015-16, which indicates increased access but maintaining achievement. And just so you know, that's an increase of 90% of students in 2015-16 to 98% of students in 2018-19. The department reports the percentage of students, of graduates rather, who took the ACT as compared to the number of graduates overall. So just so you know, students who did not graduate from high school are not included in that statistic. And our third goal was around post-secondary enrollment and attainment. The goal here was that the majority of the high school graduates from this year's senior class would earn a post-secondary certificate, diploma, or degree. And as we're reflecting on this goal, we were really noticing some complications with how we could track this. The Tennessee Higher Education Commission publishes data on the percentage of students who earn a degree within six years of post-secondary enrollment. So in other words, we wouldn't be able to track the class of 2020 high school seniors for another six years. So whether they're going into community college or a four-year program or some sort of technical program, the data looks at that six-year completion rate overall. So what we do have from our 2012 cohort, which is the most recent year for which data is available, meaning they graduated high school in 2012, they would have finished this six-year period in 2018, and the THEC went back and examined the data, was that there were slight increases from the 2010 to 2012 cohort. But honestly, that's before this strategic goal took effect in 2015. So that's not necessarily something that speaks to any outcomes from our processes here. We are certainly interested in continuing to track and share this data and working with THEC to get you updated information as soon as it is available. But I will say, as we looked back at this goal, both members and staff, we realized that as we think about our goals for the next five-year period, we want we want to make sure there are things where we can track completion of them in 2025, which can know whether or not we hit it at that point. So that helps inform our thinking as we go into our goals for the next five-year cycle. Are there any questions about looking back on the last five years? I'll also give a brief recap of our annual master plan from the most recent academic year. We had four strategic priority areas, which have remained consistent for much of the previous five years because they're all working towards those same goals. Those are high expectations and positive learning environment, great teachers and leaders, high-quality school options, and public engagement and oversight. I'm not going to go through every single priority area and benchmark for the last year. That's something that our staff are happy to talk with any member about who's interested in specific areas and want to know how we did on individual benchmarks. But I did want to highlight a few pieces of work in this area. In terms of high expectations, we've been engaging in math standards review for about the last eight months or so here, and we've had really excellent levels of public feedback. We shared a draft of proposed revisions to the standards that were developed and recommended by teams of Tennessee educators this spring. And it was actually during the COVID closures, so we weren't sure if this was going to be a priority on anybody's list. But there were over 33,000 individual public reviews, meaning that one person could have reviewed multiple standards, but in terms of the number of standards that were reviewed and had comments on them, it was a total of 33,000. So that is really excellent input from the public, and we've been able to parse out what came from parents, what came from teachers, and are really working with that data to share it with our standards recommendation committee and bring proposed changes to you all on first reading in November. We completed a redesign of the educator preparation report card, which helps us in our area of great teachers and leaders. The new website was very well received by both ed prep legislators and stakeholders who felt like it was going to be easier for someone to navigate who did not have a great deal of background information on ed prep rules and policies, which is really what we want. We want it for, we want for it to be a tool where somebody who wants to become a teacher, whether that's a high school student or somebody going back to school, can look and find the program that's going to be the best fit for them and that offers the endorsement they want and the program format they want and that's of high quality. Our licensure discipline, our legal team, continued the refinement of our licensure discipline rules and policies processes, and as Nathan described, updating several laws in that area. Our charter team has been developing a charter school authorization evaluation process and is launching a pilot this upcoming school year. And in terms of public engagement and oversight, as you clearly just heard from Nathan, we've been maintaining communication with key stakeholders throughout these very challenging times. We've had a lot of district and charter school engagement, particularly on our COVID-related rules, and we really appreciate everybody in the field, our partners at organizations like TOPS and TSBA and educator-focused organizations who've taken the time to give us feedback. So that's a general wrap-up of 2019-20's master plan. Are there any specific questions in that area? For our strategic goals for the upcoming five years, this is very exciting, thinking about what we really want to be driving toward. And our members have been involved in this process since at least December, when each of you sat down for a strategic planning interview to identify your priority areas and think you really wanted the board to work toward. We engaged with external strategic planning support from a consultant who helped us conduct interviews with almost 40 individuals, also reviewed strategic plans from over 30 state's departments or boards of education, and interviewed additional thought leaders in education research and policy. So lots and lots of work went into this. In the document that you will see to vote on tomorrow, we have an appendix that details who all we spoke to, what states we looked at, and all of that process information. Based on that feedback, the strategic goals for 2020 through 2025 focus on actions that are directly within the board's area of authority, including policymaking and developing systems that establish consistent and rigorous expectations for each local education agency. As we saw with our goals for 2015 through 2020, they were all things that we really want to see achieved or very invested in student outcomes. But as a state board, it's not our job to go into individual classrooms and teach or to overstep the authority of LEAs in developing their curricula or hiring teachers. So we really focused on setting goals that are within the board's locus of control, things that we can look at and hold ourselves accountable for in five years on whether or not they happen and not look back and say, "Well, that didn't really happen, but it wasn't because of us. It was because something didn't happen farther down the pipeline." So that's our focus, and you'll see those words, policies and systems, a lot moving forward. And we believe that an effective policy environment at the state level will set the stage for district schools and educators to best support student achievement. We have five strategic goals that we'd like to focus on over the next five years. Three of them are specific to student achievement, one at the elementary, middle, and high school grades. I'm going to read the strategic goals and then share some of the benchmarks that are within them, and this is all documented online in materials that the board will vote on tomorrow. Our first strategic goal is to ensure that policies and systems are in place so that all students have an opportunity to read on grade level in third grade as measured by TCAP. And within that, there are benchmarks about the percentage of students achieving on track or better on their TCAP reading results, but also a benchmark about ensuring LEAs are providing appropriate interventions to all kindergarten through third-grade students who are reading below grade level, so that students and school systems might meet that either by testing on grade level or by ensuring that there are tailored and appropriate intervention efforts for students who need them. Our second strategic goal is around middle school. As a former eighth-grade teacher, this was near to my heart. Ensuring that policies and systems are in place so that every student completes eighth grade with the opportunity to succeed and to be prepared to succeed in high school. We currently have a policy that requires all eighth-grade students to develop a four-year plan or for students with an IEP, a transition plan. And we want to update those rules and policies to make sure that these four-year plans are meaningful, that they're aligned with early post-secondary opportunities or CTE opportunities that are available in the student's district and aligned to their career interest. And we want to support them in achievement on TCAP as well in terms of reading and math to make sure that they're ready to access that high school grade-level content and succeed and have every opportunity available to them as they move through high school. And similarly, for students as they're exiting high school, this strategic plan contemplates a new requirement for students to develop a high school and beyond plan. So thinking through as they're approaching junior year and senior year, what are my next steps? And what do I need to make sure I do so that I can enter that TCAP, so that I have the admissions requirements for that college, so that students are ready and they don't get caught off guard right at the end by missing some kind of requirement that they need to take their next step successfully. Within that, we have action steps around ACT performance, early post-secondary access, and other relevant actions to make sure students are prepared for moving forward. Our second two strategic goals focus on more supporting actions of how are we going to get there for our students. Goal four is ensuring that a high-quality and effective teacher is present in every Tennessee public school classroom. And that contemplates educator preparation, educator licensure practices, as well as educator licensure discipline practices in terms of making sure we have quality, safe, and effective educators for all of our students. And our fifth goal is around policies and systems that ensure every student has access to high-quality learning options. And that might be through school choice options, like charter schools or other similar programs, or it might be through revising our rules around virtual schools and innovative school models. This is one that really toward the end of our strategic planning process, when we were all suddenly quarantined and working remotely, took on brand-new and increasing importance to our work to make sure that, as we heard from Megan, as we're seeing these innovative practices in districts, we're able to capture which are the most effective, how could they be shared, how could they be scaled up, and making sure there's nothing in our rules and policies that's in the way of something that's really promising. Those are the five goals and a brief overview of the benchmarks of what we'll be working towards for the next five years. To get us started, each year by law, the State Board has an annual master plan. And our master plan for the upcoming year is focused on setting us up for success towards those five-year goals. The master plan is again posted on our website for your vote tomorrow, but an example of the kinds of activities that we're going to be undertaking are included on this slide. In several areas, we called out specific rule and policy revisions. For example, those innovative learning models, early literacy efforts in the state, high school and beyond plan, thinking through our pilot year of charter school authorize your evaluation, if that changes any rules or policies we have around charters, and thinking about how to take the state's accountability model and codify it in rule and policy where it's currently just really living in our federal ESTA plan. We also have several areas where we want more research, we want more data to make sure that the board is set up to make evidence-based policy decisions. Examples of things where we want more information are included on this slide. The current promotion-retention law, the availability of early post-secondary opportunities across LEAs, how equitably those are distributed, and how we can support the expansion of those options. Thinking about our educator evaluation models, which ones are really identifying our most effective educators, and how might that need to be flexible or different in a time with more remote instruction. And because a lot of these things about student planning will require time with school counselors who are able to support students in thinking through their options, we want to study how well the Tennessee School Counseling Standards that the board adopted in 2016 or 2017 have been implemented to date and if any revisions or additional supports are needed there. And finally, as a staff, we have several areas of recurring work, things that are legislatively required, and obviously, those things do not drop even when we have new priorities. Examples of these kinds of things are educator licensure discipline, the BEP review committee, academic standard review on our six-year cycle, the annual educator preparation report card, the transitioning of our charter school work to the commission. So we have several things that we are required to do annually that we will make sure continue. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and I'm excited for our team to dive in and work on these and share updates with you throughout the upcoming years.
Are there any questions or comments for Ms. Owen?
This is Bob. I have just a comment. I want to highlight something that Amy said, is that this year, our strategic plan, the goals, are things that we have responsibility and authority for that we can execute. And I think that's really important. I know the board really worked hard this year to come up with those strategic goals that weren't so broad-based that we didn't have the responsibility for. But we do have the capability to execute these, and I think that is commendable of what we've done there.
This is Gordon. Yeah, I would just like to echo Bob's comments there about the work that's come out of the plan. It's not just previous year, but going back. And I'm glad that we did get that last goal, I think it was goal five, and just as we were seeing the potential impact of COVID. I would just ask the question, just with what is going on and what we don't know at this point. I think I just want to make sure that we are taking into consideration just the impact that the pandemic is having on education and making sure that we've got our basics covered when it comes to our strategic plan. But I do think that final goal does allow that. I just think we'll be looking at more out-of-the-box things in the next few years to come.
I think you're absolutely right, Gordon, and I think, in my humble opinion, those five-year goals are broad enough and ambitious enough that we can work within them. And if we need to alter our benchmarks or if we take different things into account in a master plan each year based on maybe what we hear from the Recovery and Innovation Commission or just situations that actually arise as we're all muddling through this, that we do have that flexibility.
Yep. Thank you.
I would just add again, a broken, a little bit of a broken record for me, but just making sure the benchmark where we are looking at this, the platform for delivery under circumstance. I don't know what we could do in the next year, but I do know Representative White is going to push pretty hard on the broadband. He had an op-ed in the paper, Commercial Appeal, this week, and I talked to him yesterday, and that's pretty high on his list, so.
Thank you for mentioning that, Larry, because I read that op-ed, and I was pleased to see that he had written that. And he talked about the collaboration between the federal government and the state government to move the needle in the right direction to make that happen. So thank you for bringing that up. Amy, you were going to say something?
No, I just think that's really wise, and I think there's opportunities for partnerships with different agencies. I know the Department of Economic and Community Development has been giving out grants for several years to help expand broadband coverage in the state, so just thinking through every opportunity we have available like that.
And I believe when the commissioner was in Washington, meeting with other stakeholders in education across the nation along with President Trump, there was a conversation about the federal assistance for broadband. So she stressed that with him, and she shared that with us, one of our meetings with her. So I think with a lot of people pushing the envelope here, that we will get what we want eventually, and I hope it's sooner rather than later. And we certainly appreciate Representative White, Chairman White's leadership in that regard. The only other thing that I want to add, and there may be somebody else that wants to add, I think it's important to recognize the hard work behind the scenes that our senior team with Dr. Morrison and our staff worked on to get us to the point where we could weigh in and then give our feedback and get to the point where we have this product that you shared with us today and what we'll ultimately vote on tomorrow. So do want to acknowledge that and your leadership on that effort, Amy. So thank you so much for that. And Daryl, I believe you had something you wanted to add?
Yes, ma'am. I just wanted to essentially echo the majority of the sentiments that have been expressed in terms of appreciation and gratitude to Ms. Owen as the ongoing steward of this process for us, you know, over the course of the time that I've been on the board, and certainly the advisor or consultant that was brought into the process this time around, and Ms. Owen's ability to be politely persistent in getting us to this point. So we just want to say thank you.
Well, thank you, Daryl. I'll keep aiming for the polite part.
Thank you for that. Anyone else? Thank you again, and we'll move on to the next agenda item, the charter school appeal for Ms. Tess Stovall.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members. My name is Tess Stovall. I serve as the Director of Charter Schools for the State Board of Education. My colleague, Ally, is getting our PowerPoint presentation up and running. The presentation today is going to be an overview of the executive director's recommendation in the Compass Community Schools Midtown Appeal. Ally and I will be walking through the facts and the analysis in this appeal, and then at the end, we're going to open it up for discussion and questions that you all may have of the two of us as well as Dr. Morrison. So I first want to ground this discussion in the State Board statutory charge when it comes to amendment appeals. So pursuant to Tennessee Code Annotated 4913-110D, the governing board of a charter school can petition their authorizer to amend their charter agreement. The timelines for approval and the appeal process will be determined by the State Board. So in the case of the Compass Midtown School, they petition their authorizer Shelby County to amend their charter agreement. Shelby County denied this amendment petition based on the Shelby County Board Policy 1011. So pursuant to the State Board's rule, a charter school may appeal and authorize their decision to deny the amendment petition to the State Board. Ally, can you put to the next? Thank you. So upon receipt of this appeal, the State Board staff conducted the following process when it received the appeal. First, requested documentation from both Compass and Shelby County schools regarding both the amendment petition itself and the board's reasoning for its denial. Dr. Morrison held a virtual public hearing in which both parties were able to speak to the amendment petition. Dr. Morrison asked questions of both parties, and we accepted both oral and written comment at the public hearing and then as well as after the public hearing. And then the staff conducted a complete review of the record, looking at everything that had been submitted by both parties and the information collected at the public hearing. The State Board standard of review in an amendment appeal is the following. In order to overturn a law- In order to overturn a local board of education's decision to deny a charter amendment petition, the State Board must find that the local board's decision to deny the charter amendment petition was contrary to the best interest of the students, the LEA, or the community. In the case of this appeal, the Executive Director's recommendation is based on the following. First, the procedural history. Second, the findings of fact. And third, the analysis of the issues. Dr. Morrison believes that Shelby County's decision to deny the amendment petition was not contrary to the best interest of the students, the LEA, and the community. Therefore, Dr. Morrison is recommending that the State Board uphold the decision of Shelby County Schools to deny the amendment petition of the Compass Midtown. I will now pass the presentation to my colleague, Ally Gaffey, who will walk you through the facts in this appeal.
Thanks, Tess. Ally Gaffey, Deputy Director of Charter Schools for the State Board. So I'll start with an overview of the timeline of events and then move into the facts and analysis of this appeal. Compass Midtown first opened its doors for the 2019-20 school year with students in grades seven through 12. On January 15th, midway through its first year of operation, Compass Midtown submitted a letter of intent to Shelby County Schools to amend its charter agreement, followed by an amendment application on February 14th. On April 28th, the Shelby County Schools Office of Charter Schools recommended to its Board of Education that the Compass Midtown Amendment Application be denied. The Board of Education voted to send the amendment, along with others, back to committee to allow for further discussion. The amendment petition was back for a vote on May 11th, and the Shelby County Schools' Board of Education voted to deny the amendment application of Compass Midtown. Compass Midtown appealed this denial to the State Board on May 21st. Next, we'll move into the findings of facts and the analysis of the facts on this appeal. Compass Midtown again opened for the 1920 school year and struggled to meet its enrollment targets of 60 students in each grade seven and eight. Midway through its first year, Compass Midtown put in motion an amendment petition which would alter its grade configuration by gradually reducing from a seventh through 12th grade school to a nine through 12th grade school by 21-22, thus becoming a traditional high school. Compass Midtown explained that the amendment request was due to its lower-than-expected enrollment numbers for seventh and eighth grade in its first year, as well as based on feedback from current families within the Compass network. Compass Midtown is part of a larger Compass Community Schools network, which operates a total of six schools in the Memphis region, with five holding grades K through eight and one school, Compass Midtown, serving seven to 12. At the time that Shelby County was considering this amendment petition, the State Board's emergency rule on amendment petitions had expired, and the State Board's permanent rule was not yet in effect. As a result, Shelby County created its own application and evaluation process and held all amendment petition applicants to the same performance expectations. During the Shelby County Schools' Board of Education meeting, the Office of Charter Schools presented its regional seat analysis as part of the rationale for recommending denial of the amendment petition. The analysis maps out neighborhoods which are in need of quality seats, as well as those that are oversaturated. The Midtown neighborhood where Compass Midtown operates was noted to be in need of 254 quality seats in the sixth through eighth grade band. Additionally, Shelby County Schools stated that this need for quality seats was a contributing factor to approving the original charter application for Compass Midtown in 2018. The charter application had proposed it would provide 120 quality seats between its seventh and eighth grades. Shelby County stated that Compass Midtown's request to reduce the grade configuration in its first year of operation was an area of concern, particularly knowing that it had only completed one enrollment cycle before requesting this grade configuration change. Ultimately, Shelby County Schools' decision to deny the amendment request was based on its board policy, which states that amendments shall be considered only after one or more schools operated by the network have been in operation for at least three years, and that each school within the network has a composite score of 3.0 or better on the core components of its accountability framework. Upon analysis of these facts, we have determined the following. Compass Midtown was approved by Shelby County in 2018 for a seventh through 12th grade school in the Midtown neighborhood, which Shelby County has demonstrated is in need of quality seats at the middle school level. However, Compass Midtown did not provide significant evidence that it focused on recruitment of students outside of the Compass network to fill its seventh and eighth grade seats, thus stunting its opportunity to fill the 120 available seats and meet the need for quality seats in the neighborhood. While Compass Midtown did not enroll 60 students in both seventh and eighth grades by the start of the 1920 year, the decision to make a drastic course correction in the middle of its first year was premature. A grade configuration change may be what the school ultimately decides is necessary, but after just one year of enrollment and minimal recruitment efforts outside of the Compass Schools' community is too early to determine the need for this change. Shelby County Schools' Office of Charter Schools communicated the amendment petition process and the performance requirements explicitly stated in its local board policy. Compass Midtown knew the policy existed, knew it did not meet the performance requirements for approval, and yet evidence reflects that the school did not plan to recruit or serve seventh-grade students for the 2021 school year. Compass Midtown operated under the expectation that the amendment would be approved. The State Board's quality authorizing standards are designed as a playbook for authorizers to include expectations for charter agreement modifications like this. So before I open it up to discussion, I'd like to take a minute to highlight how Shelby County's process aligns with our quality authorizing standards. Pursuant to Tennessee Code annotated 4913-108, local boards of education are required to align their authorizing practices to our authorizing standards. In the absence of a state-approved amendment petition application and rubric, Shelby County created its own application and review process and relied heavily on its local board policy to guide its decisions. Shelby County used this same application process and its local board policy last fall for a cycle of amendment petitions, and this is the same process that was used for its most recent cycle this spring when reviewing Compass Midtown. The standards require authorizers to allow for occasional material changes to a charter agreement, and as a grade configuration change is a significant one, it would be appropriate and expected that an authorizer would consider an operator's track record and performance when reviewing amendment petitions. Shelby County clearly communicated these performance expectations with all of its charter schools, and in the case of Compass Midtown, with only one year in operation and the cancellation of testing this spring, there wasn't any data to consider against Shelby County's performance expectations. The Office of Charter Schools only recommended approval for those applicants who met the high bar for performance, of which Compass Midtown did not meet. So after reviewing all the facts and analyzing the evidence provided, the recommendation again is as follows. The Shelby County Schools' Office of Charter Schools recommended denial of the Compass Midtown Amendment Application because Compass Community Schools does not have any schools within its network that has been in operation for at least three years, and Compass Midtown lacks performance data to evaluate its ratings on the district's accountability framework. In the absence of a state-approved application and rubric, Shelby County created, communicated, and followed a transparent application and evaluation process and demonstrated a need for high-quality seats in the Midtown neighborhood. Therefore, Dr. Morrison recommends that the State Board uphold the decision of Shelby County to deny the amendment petition of Compass Midtown. So with that, I'll open it up to our members for discussion and questions.
This is Bob.
I think it's important to note, and it says that we didn't have an application or rubric State Board, but we will be voting on one and we'll have one going forward, correct?
Yes, that's correct. And Bob, this is Tess. I do want to point out too, and this is mentioned in the Executive Director's recommendation, but now that the State Board rule is in effect, grade changes like the petition that was submitted by Compass Midtown will only be allowed to be considered in the fall. We recognize that the timeline for this amendment petition does not set anyone up for success, the district, the school, even the State Board here, as you all are discussing. So when we were putting together the rule, we made it explicitly clear that any grade changes, grade expansions, or changes when it comes to increased enrollment would only be considered in the fall, such that the operator could be prepared.
Thank you. And if Compass Midtown wanted to, they could reapply next fall for the following year, correct?
Absolutely. They have the option to resubmit for this fall, for next school year if they would like.
But this, Larry, but they would not be able to because of the three-year operational...
So that is Shelby County's local board policy, which is what they used in the absence of our rubric. But now with the application rubric that will be in place after this meeting, that will no longer be a method to evaluate the application.
Okay.
Larry, sorry, go ahead.
Well, I'm supportive of this, but it just seems like that Campus made a tactical mistake and we're now in the middle of, you know, a situation where they don't, apparently don't feel like they can do the seventh and eighth grade, and now we're saying, okay, but you have to. It just, something about it bothers me, and that is that, you know, and maybe they need to work harder, like it says, to fulfill those seats, but, and I'm supportive of it, but it just, there's something about it that just doesn't feel right to me.
Larry, this is Sarah. Let me just jump in for a quick minute, because I know we've talked with all of you on your prep calls about this, but as I mentioned then, and we'll just reiterate now, this was a difficult one for our staff because I do think not having the state rubric and guidance was problematic in this case. And, you know, short of having that, what we saw was that Shelby County did communicate clearly their expectations and how they would review these amendment applications, but as Tess and Ally have both said, the timing for this kind of a change was problematic. The really bright line that Shelby County used in terms of no amendments, you know, hard stop in the first three years, I think is problematic. And I do think, you know, on the part of Compass, there is reason to believe that with some additional outreach beyond their current network, they may be able to pick up some additional seats. But, you know, that said, they'll have the opportunity, if that still is not meeting their needs in terms of, you know, the student enrollment and the grade configuration that they think ultimately is going to serve this school most successfully, to reapply in the coming months and make their case again. And under that application, Shelby County and the State Board will be using the state-approved rubric and application, assuming that passes tomorrow. So the timing of this was problematic, and ultimately it was a hard decision, but, you know, we made the best recommendation we could based on all of the evidence, but certainly support all of you in thinking about this in your individual capacities and, you know, whatever additional discussion you might want to have as a board before voting tomorrow.
And this is Lily, and I shared some of the same concerns that Larry has expressed here in my one-on-one. And for me, based on what you just said, Sarah, I believe that we've done our due diligence, you've done your work, Tess and the team have done a great job with this. The one piece that we haven't mentioned again, and I think we need to mention it, is the lack of the quality seats. And that was part of the reason why I thought they were going for the seventh and the eighth grade. And I was concerned that they had not been aggressively seeking or sort of feared recruiting of those seventh and eighth grade students, and they based it on, as we all know, the previous school that was occupying that space that apparently did well in that regard with seventh through 12th. So while it's troubling what has happened and the timing is, it was not right, I appreciate the work and the recommendation that has come forward, and we'll make our individual decisions tomorrow. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with that. I just, I think it's, you know, it's a timing, somewhat of a timing problem. I do, after we finish this discussion, I would like an update on where the charter, the new charter commission is, where they are in their process, et cetera, after we finish this discussion.
Madam Chair, this is Daryl.
Daryl.
In reviewing the information on this particular item, I saw where Compass, I think it was a request for additional information, I'm assuming from us, where Compass outlined steps that it might take should their appeal be denied in preparation for this upcoming school year. And those steps, you know, appear to be reasonable. I guess my question in reading the rationale from Compass is whether, and I'm not asking for an answer from anybody, I'm just talking, is whether their paradigm has shifted from a parochial school to a public charter school. And the reason that's a question mark for me is because in looking at their information, it seems like they were relying heavily on their existing student population coming from the elementary schools, as opposed to, as a public charter school and as many charters do, cast a very wide net from a recruiting standpoint to try and meet their target numbers. And so those were just a couple of items that jumped out at me, but it's good to hear, one, that they have a game plan in place should the appeal be denied, and that with our new policy being put in place, there's another avenue should they choose to pursue it to address their issue right now.
I think those are very important points that you have brought out to our attention, Daryl, so thank you for that. Any other questions or comments before we move on to the next agenda item? Tess and Ally, thank you so much for paring it down for us and putting it clearly in terms that everyone is understanding exactly what's before us tomorrow when we take our vote. Now turning to Brittany Kendrick and Todd Madison for the licensure actions.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members. I am Brittany Kendrick, the Assistant General Counsel for the State Board, along with my colleague, Todd Madison, the Staff Attorney for the State Board. We are here today to just discuss any clarifying questions you may have on the staff recommendations for educator licensure cases, or to discuss any items that you may want to pull ahead of tomorrow's meeting for further discussion or separate vote.
Silence is golden.
It is.
This might be a first.
I think, I keep track, it's probably the second time.
Okay, it's so rare, I didn't remember that one.
Right.
So we have no request to pull any of the items or to consider any of them separately?
Maybe it says something about Brittany and her team continuing to provide us better and better information upfront that we're satisfied with the recommendations. Thank you, Brittany.
Thank you for that. We're trying.
Yes, and I shared this with Sarah, and I think I may have mentioned it to you all in the one-on-one, to be able to have the level of detail in the summary pages and in the documentation, especially the historical votes that we've taken in the past and other aspects that help us make better informed decisions. And so that work is recognized and greatly appreciated, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
From anybody else? Thank you both. We're going to move on to the next agenda item, Educator Preparation Provider Approval Process, Mr. Michael Derline and Dr. Annie Insana. I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing your last name correctly, so I apologize if I've messed it up. I'll let you say it.
Oh, that was correct. Good morning, Madam Chair. I know, you know mine. You did get Annie's correct as well.
Thank you.
Most people don't pronounce my last name correctly, so I appreciate it. Good morning, Madam Chair and Board Members. My name is Michael Derline, Senior Director of Educator Licenseur and Preparation, and I am joined by Dr. Annie Insana, who I would believe is attempting to get our PowerPoint shared. shared at the moment. Annie, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. I'm sorry, we're having a little bit of technical difficulties.
No problem.
One minute, please.
And while she's getting that set up, I will say that we really wanted to set aside some time to share an overview of the Educator Preparation Provider and Specialty Area Program Review Process, recognizing that you have a whole lot of these to vote on tomorrow, eleven to be exact, which I believe is the most I've ever seen. That was a result of us kind of putting a pause on this process during the eighteen-nineteen year, to be able to redesign the entire process and implement it with fidelity during the nineteen-twenty year. Annie, you can go ahead and advance to the next slide. So this is our best-for-all strategic plan. The process for approving educator preparation provider and specialty area programs fits pretty squarely in that educators category, though it does kind of bleed into academics as well. The goal of our work is to ensure that educator preparation providers are held accountable for the teachers and leaders that they produce, and that we have a process for ensuring every so often that they've been reviewed in accordance with current national standards and state standards as well. So again, our purpose here is to orient new state board members to the context and redesign of the provider and program level approval process, and then also preview some of the recommendations you will be voting on tomorrow, which make up all of the work that we did last fall. And you'll see that there are many different types of reviews that we engaged in, so we certainly want to make sure that you understand the context of each of the reviews. And I will just note, this really was a heavy year for provider reviews. So not only during the meeting tomorrow will you see a number, you know, a higher percentage of reviews that you're voting on, recommendations, you'll also see that in the fall as we finalize many of the reviews that took place in the spring of 2020. We do have, I will say, as you probably noticed, we have a whole lot of content to share here. We are going to do our absolute best to summarize many of these slides, recognizing you have the content, the detailed content right in front of you. Please feel free to stop us at any point in time if you have any questions. All right. So as it relates to program approval, we obviously bring recommendations to you all for rules and policies related to EPP and specialty area program approval. You establish those rules and policies, we then implement those. And so the bulk of this presentation will focus on our implementation process to help you understand what all has gone into that work in advance of us bringing recommendations to you tomorrow for EPP and specialty area program review. Just for some context, this map provides some detail about all of our approved providers across the state. As you can see, it's a very diverse set of providers, public, private, large, medium, small. We even have some education-related organizations such as the Nashville Teacher Residency and Teach for America Memphis that are approved. And recently, the board approved the first LEA as a provider, Rutherford County Schools, and they provide teacher preparation in the area of occupational education. So this gives a pretty high-level overview of our process. So at the earliest stage of this, if an entity is interested in becoming a provider, they apply to us, and we have a whole process for that. And two of the recommendations you'll be voting on tomorrow are based off of that review. We provide feedback on that proposal within ninety days, so it is an iterative process. You all then vote on the initial approval of that provider. We then conduct within three to five years a full approval review, which the reason for allowing three to five years is because then the provider can generate data and have some evidence of successful implementation of their program. An annual reporting starts. So the state board has really worked hard to improve the teacher preparation report card over the year. We have a companion report that is internal-facing but focuses on very similar metrics, and it is used as part of the review process. So annual reporting starts as soon as providers are generating data. So we are kind of looking at the progress and the outcomes of those providers every year, once they've been approved for a few years. And then every seven years, there's a comprehensive review that is conducted, and that's based on the CAPE standards, which we'll talk for just a little bit right now. So the Council for the Accreditation of Educator Preparation sets the standards for educator preparation providers regardless of the pathway that they seek, whether they seek accreditation or they go through a state-managed visit. And this kind of just details the standards themselves and what the various components are. So standard one focuses on content and pedagogical knowledge. Two focuses on clinical partnerships and practice, so there's a really strong focus on EPP and district partnerships in that standard. Standard three focuses on candidate quality, recruitment, and selectivity. Standard four is probably the most significant shift from the NCAP standards, which were in effect prior to CAPE standards, program impact. So in Tennessee, we are very rich with data that shows us whether teachers are having a positive impact on student growth. We have a whole lot of data on observation, and all of that is then traced back to the provider and used as part of our program approval process. And then lastly, standard five focuses on provider quality assurance and continuous improvement. And this has been an interesting trend, as you'll see in a little while, where this is really asking the provider to begin using that data for their own continuous improvement. So comprehensive review types. As I mentioned just a moment ago, CAPE accreditation is an elective process, so EPPs do not have to go through CAPE accreditation. About sixty percent of our EPPs do go through that process and are CAPE accredited. And with that process, CAPE brings a national team onsite. There's a review process that happens offsite, and then a national team comes onsite to review the provider. But we also want to continue to make this distinction between provider reviews and licensure program reviews or specialty area program reviews, because what we have set up with CAPE is called a CAPE-State Joint Review, where that national team reviews the provider and a state team that we have trained reviews the licensure programs. And then, as you all are probably aware, over the last couple of years, we have completely redesigned our state-managed process. So forty percent of our EPPs in Tennessee go through this process, and we have a state team that is trained to review the provider and all of the licensure programs. I'm not going to go over everything in this table, but this table just allows you to kind of see some of the key similarities and differences between these review types as far as review teams and report generation. One thing I will note, there is an Advisory Committee on Educator Preparation, which is different from the Advisory Committee that the state board has for the report card. This one is required in state board policy, and we'll talk a bit more about that later. But regardless of the review pathway, whether it's state-managed or CAPE-state joint, this Advisory Committee comes together prior to us bringing recommendations to you all. Also, I won't go through each of these, but just a reminder and a reference that you can come back to, these are the various decisions that are recommendations we can bring to you for providers, everything from full approval exemplary status to denial of approval. I will note that since last year was kind of our first year implementing this new process, we've yet to really develop a clear pathway toward exemplary status. That is something we hope to work on in the coming year. This is a quick snapshot of the last five years. So the CAPE standards were adopted in 2015. We then spent the last few years revising the state-managed process and also engaging in deep training. So I think it's worth noting that in June of 2019, we trained upwards of sixty-plus review team members, Tennessee-based folks from EPPs and districts, which provided us with a really strong pool of peers to pull from as we needed to assign people to these reviews. We will, in spring 2020, we convened the Advisory Council after implementing the TNCR process for a full year. We'll talk about that a little bit later. And then lastly, just a note and something kind of to highlight as we think ahead, we certainly want to learn from this process, so we are in the process of gathering data from our providers, from our review team members. And our intent is to make sure that our process is as strong as it can be, focused on both accountability and continuous improvement of preparation providers. And we want to get into a space where we're doing a good job sharing information across providers. That wasn't always something that we did, but we're finding some common themes in the reviews, and we'd like to be able to highlight some of those practices that we, review teams have identified as strong and be able to get that back out into the field. I believe I'm now turning it over to Annie for the bulk of this presentation. Again, feel free to jump in if you have any questions throughout.
Thank you, Michael. I'm Annie Insana, I'm the Senior Director of Educator Preparation and with the department. And I'd like to just talk a little bit about the difference between the four different types of reviews that you all will be seeing on the agenda for vote tomorrow, as well as give you a concise summary of the outcomes so that you're a bit more informed about the processes themselves. So the first, our TNCR, state-managed reviews, as Michael mentioned, we implemented for the first time during the nineteen-twenty year. And we spent about two years revising this process, and while it felt like the CAPE standards themselves were very strong, we knew that we needed a robust process that was contextualized within Tennessee's needs. We wanted to do some work to clarify what the standard-level expectations were and to really provide a support for systems thinking and continuous improvement. And because we're such a data-rich state, be able to develop this process that clearly integrates the quantitative data from annual reports with the qualitative expectations of the standards. So through the last couple of years, we were able to develop a very comprehensive process. This demonstrates an example timeline. We began talking with EPPs almost a year in advance to talk about the iterative process of developing the self-study and the reporting with the onsite visit, and then the mechanisms afterwards. So very comprehensive, very detailed and intense. We're also able to create a handbook to support our EPPs who are going through this process that we also used as part of our reviewer training. And this is a screenshot that demonstrates how we were able to take the language of the standards in the component and break it down to ask very specific narrative prompting questions and to ask for specific required file uploads that would support, you know, demonstration of the evidence needed to see whether or not those EPPs are meeting expectations on the standards. For every component in addition, we were able to develop a rubric to support the review team in understanding the evidence that they're seeing and whether or not it's meeting expectations or not. And we were able to take those rubrics, the review teams, and sort of tree up the findings from there and be able to make that recommendation whether or not the EPP is meeting expectations or not on standard. With a CAPE-state joint review, again, there's a separate national team that comes to evaluate the EPP, and then there's a state team simultaneously reviewing the programs. So the CAPE organization has their own process for taking the outcomes from those particular reviews and putting them forward to their own advisory committee and generating these reports that you'll see for any CAPE-state joint review. And what it does is provide the accreditation outcomes, whether or not accreditation is granted or not. Should be worth noting that accreditation does not immediately mean state approval. It's some of the work that our advisory committee does to take those outcomes from the CAPE advisory committee and support us with the translation of those outcomes to provide a recommendation to you all. Regardless of the type of comprehensive review, all EPPs are also reviewed with their specialty area programs, and those are synonymous with licensure programs. So for example, Spanish K-12 or Mathematics 6-8 program. And all of those programs are reviewed, looking at these five particular components. It's really, these requirements are generated looking at policy requirements and national and state standards. So really, the meat of that review is within that program alignment and demonstration of their program design through narrative. The third type of review that you'll see tomorrow is our focused reviews, and there'll be two EPPs that you'll review outcomes from the focused review. A focused review is when an EPP has issued a probationary approval with major stipulations from their comprehensive review. And what that process entails is that within three months of issuing that status, the EPP would then need to generate with support from the department an action plan that's targeted to those particular areas of deficiency. We review that action plan, and then we're able to monitor the EPP's progress at least yearly on each area of those stipulations or deficiencies within the plan. And with a focused review, assuming that the EPP makes adequate progress across those three years, then they, at the end of those three years, will participate in a focused review, which looks much like the comprehensive review, but it's targeted just on the standards and components that demonstrated deficiency three years prior. And finally, the fourth review will be the prospective EPPs. So any eligible organizations that are seeking state approval to become an EPP in Tennessee are listed here. We've gotten a lot of interest in this area within the last year or two across each of these eligible organization types. As Michael mentioned, our first LEA as EPP is approved back in 2019 with Rutherford County. And then you'll see two prospective EPP reviews with Matlow State Community College as well as Western Governors. Matlow State Community College is of course an IHG, and then Western Governors is an out-of-state IHG, and we'll talk more about the requirements for that process in a little bit. What's worth noting also with the prospective EPP, this is an iterative review, but it's conducted by TDOE reviewers. And so anytime an organization or entity is interested in becoming an EPP mandated by Ed Prep Rule, we engage them in a mandatory two-to-three-hour orientation to kind of walk through what these expectations are and to get clarification. This is what it means to be an approved provider in the state of Tennessee. The process is rigorous. There are several requirements for those entities to follow, and you can see some of those components listed here on below. So the Advisory Committee on Educator Preparation, again, it's a different Advisory Committee, and this is, again, a requirement by state board rule. And we have seven members that have served on this committee this spring just to evaluate the fall 2019 reviews. And the work of this committee occurred across three different meetings within the spring. The members were asked to review all the outcomes of the reviews, participate in consensus calls facilitated by our office to ensure the consistency and integrity across the reviews. They then make recommendations to us, which we take into consideration as we bring forward the final recommendations to you all. We can't say enough good things about this group. There's seven members currently as part of this Advisory Committee. They're representative of both EPPs and LEAs, EPPs, both public and private. These members serve essential education roles ranging from teachers to administrators to deans and chairs, and they're representative across each of the major regions of Tennessee. All of these members are trained in either the CAPE comprehensive review process and/or our state-managed process. Many members have recently served on review teams themselves or have had their own EPPs go through this process recently. This membership is voluntary, and again, we can't say enough good things. We literally had a meeting scheduled for March 13th that we had, that was in person, that we had to pivot very quickly and turn all of the subsequent meetings online to a virtual format. And all, they've done such great work there and been able to really aid us in making these recommendations to you all. So finally, we've provided for you all, at a glance, you'll be looking across eleven reviews that range from state-managed to CAPE-state joint comprehensive reviews, two focused reviews, and then two prospective EPP reviews on the docket tomorrow. reviews, and then two prospective EPP reviews on the docket tomorrow. And what we've, want to talk with you all, too, is that there's some slight changes across language that we use. So for the TNCR, state-managed, as well as the focused reviews, when you see language that is identified as either a major stipulation or a minor stipulation, we have differences across that language. A major stipulation, we define as a substantive and pervasive issue identified within and across standards. A minor stipulation are patterns and trends of deficiencies either within and across standards, but major is really substantive and pervasive. For the first time, we're introducing what we call recommendations for improvement. These are not punitive, but they're areas of focus that have been derived by the review team that is meant to inform EPPs of future continuous improvement efforts. And so those are indicated within their final reports as well. CAPE has a slightly different definition for stipulations than areas for improvement. When we read this definition of stipulation, it's more or less equivalent to our definition of a major stipulation for state-managed reviews. It's of sufficient severity that a standard is determined to be a met. An area for improvement is a weakness in evidence for a component or a standard. And for us, it's more or less the equivalent to either our minor stipulations or recommendations for improvement. And again, we've really leaned on our Advisory Committee on Educator Preparation just to support us with that translation. So at a glance, these tables show by each type of review, the outcomes. And so when you look across, you'll see the four state-managed review EPPs represented across the columns. And the final report standards outcome within that first row, those are the CAPE standards that you're seeing with one, two, three, four, and five. And this is just an abbreviation to show quickly at a glance whether or not the EPPs met the expectations of the standards and whether or not there were any identified major or minor stipulations. If there were any recommendations for improvement, again, not punitive, but supportive of continuous improvement, you'll see that in the second row. And then the ASAP review, we've demonstrated here in the third row to say whether or not the ASAP was in agreement with the review team throughout the series of consensus meetings that we facilitated. And then finally, in bold, at the EPP level, is the final recommendation we're bringing to you all for each of the provider outcomes. So for example, full approval with minor stipulations or probationary approval with major stipulations. And then the table below is specific outcomes for the specialty area programs or licensure programs in terms of their review. So within that first row, you can see the final report sap outcomes, that they're meeting expectations across the board with no recommendations for improvement, that the ASAP in the second row is in agreement with the review team, and then the final recommendation that we'll be bringing to you all in terms of the outcomes of those programs. Similarly, you can read this chart in the same way. This is the state, CAPE State Joint Review summary. And so you'll see three EPPs that participated in those in this fall. With the final report standard outcome, again, standards one, CAPE standards one through five listed there with any met or unmet or AFI language associated. You can see the CAPE Advisory Council decisions across that second row, whether or not accreditation was granted at the initial and standard level. The ASAP review, whether or not they were in agreement with the TDOE translation, and again, the final recommendation being brought to you all. Similarly, the table below outlines the outcomes for the programs for our CAPE State Joint Review. This table illustrates the focused review outcomes. So for Johnson University and Bethel, what's important to note here with a focused review, again, we zero in specifically on just the deficiencies. So if you're seeing an NA next to a particular standard, that means it was not required to be evaluated during the focused review because there were no identified deficiencies. So with Johnson and Bethel, you'll see MAs within respective standards four and standard one. If any identified recommendations for improvement, they're listed here. And then, of course, the ASAP, and then final recommendations there. Bethel University did not require any program to be reviewed as part of the focused review, so you'll see that that is not applicable for this type of review for Bethel. Finally, this is the fall 2019 prospective EPP review, again, done by department reviewers. You can see our two prospective EPPs with Motlo State and Western Governors. And then what you could see listed down below are the expectations from the proposal, whether or not they met or did not meet expectations. And then the overall recommendations for you all in terms of the EPP and specialty area programs. One area of note that we did not put on this chart is that the ASAP also reviewed these two types of prospective EPP outcomes, and they were also in agreement with the review team members. So our final slide here is just, again, a slide reminding you all of the potential outcomes for both the provider-level recommendations as well as the program-level recommendations. That was a lot of content. We can turn it over to you all with any particular questions that you have.
Thank you both.
Madam Chair, this is Bob Eby.
Yes, Bob.
I don't know if that's me. I was noticing on the Western Governors' recommendation that they did meet the requirements for math, biology, chemistry, earth science, and physics, and you're recommending denial of approval for elementary ed, English, special ed. And then it says, "Western Governors is therefore recommended for initial approval." I assume that's initial approval for just those categories and not a broad initial approval? Is that correct?
Sure. So the recommendation is for the overall approval of the provider, as well as the specific math and science programs as well. We're recommending denial of approval for the other listed programs because those specific deficiencies were related to the literacy review. You may remember back in 2017 with the adoption of the EPP literacy standards, our department developed a pretty rigorous review process to evaluate how EPPs were integrating literacy standards within their program. That's also required of the prospective EPP proposal process. And Western Governors, just either through the iterative review, wasn't able to meet expectations specifically on the literacy review. So we are recommending at this time denial of approval for those particular programs. Should Western Governors become an approved EPP by vote tomorrow, they understand that they can resubmit specialty area program proposals for those particular areas to be reviewed again by our office.
Thank you. Brings up another question. Since they're not being recommended for approval for English, elementary ed, et cetera, somewhere I remember reading another policy on endorsements that says that like to get a math endorsement, you also must meet the requirements for literacy. So if that's the case, why would we provide them, allow them or endorse them to be an EPP if they don't meet requirements for elementary ed and literacy and et cetera?
Sure. So there's a specific set of literacy standards that's also required for any math, science, or non-ELA secondary programs. And Western Governors did demonstrate sufficient alignment to those particular literacy standards for the math and science programs.
Thank you.
Are there other questions or comments? Thank you both so much. I know that this has been a lot of work for you all with 11 that you've had to review. And so we know that that was a daunting task for you. And frankly, when, Michael, you first mentioned to us the numbers, I found myself saying, how would you possibly get this completed? And clearly, you have a great team of people that you have trained to do this work and coordinated through your efforts. So thank you both so much for being with us today and for sharing this information. Certainly does help, and particularly with, we have several new board members. Appreciate that orientation. And a reminder to returning board members, those of us that have been here for a while, certainly welcome those opportunities, too. So thank you for that as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you so much. With that, that really does conclude all of the agenda items. And I do want to state one more time, I want to thank all of the presenters today for your efforts to be here with us and to make the work for the board easier in the long run. It's never easy, but certainly you do everything in your power to pare it down for us, to make it cogent and clear and understandable. We all do our own homework, but you can make it clearer for us as we begin our process of voting the following day. And I don't think we can underscore either what you all do and the day-to-day. You can make it look easy at times, and we know that it's not. We know that there's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes. So thank you each for your hard work in that area. There is one other person that I do want to thank. There are lots of people that deserve thanks, so bear with me today. Because since COVID-19, and we've had this need to meet remotely, virtually, you know, there's a lot of things that can go wrong when you meet in this format. And so Elizabeth Hollis on our staff has done a remarkable job of making sure that we can see each other, we can hear each other, that we avoid those technical glitches that can easily happen when you meet this way. So a huge shout-out to her and thanks for her work. We can't see her because she's hiding herself, but thank you so much, Elizabeth. We appreciate your great work.
Thank you, Lillian. I'm happy to help.
Thank you. Are there any other closing words or comments that anyone wants to share before I declare that we're adjourned and dissolved? Or whatever the proper terminology is. Nathan tries to keep me straight there. Any other comments? Like, I can hear him. What are you saying?
I said, you've got language, right? Yes, very good.
I have the language. It's not about my language, although it could be. Send me back to school. No, it's just making sure that we do have a few minutes left. And I believe, I wanted to go back to Larry for just a moment, because Larry, you made a statement about wanting to know the status of the charter commission. Do we want to take a moment to do that? We do have a few more minutes to do that.
Lillian, this is Sarah. I'm already unmuted, so I'm happy to very briefly touch on that. I was in touch with Tess and team about that comment and how we might follow up. But they are in the process of working through the interviews and hiring of their executive director. In the meantime, the commission is continuing to meet to pass policies and rules, not rules, well, at some point it'll be rules. Right now, it's mostly policies, as they begin to contemplate taking over the appeals work starting essentially next spring. I think we might be able to give you more of a full update sort of after someone's hired and the staff for that commission is more in place later this fall. And maybe we could couple that with an update on the authorizer evaluation work that our team is taking on, which is new work for us. But that's kind of the short story. They're in the process of kind of ramping up both in terms of their team and in terms of some of the foundational policies and other items that they need to have in place before they can take on the appeals.
Well, Sarah, thank you. That's really what I was curious about, is just a sort of a real quick update. I don't think there's need for any more depth, just kind of understanding where they are, where they are in their process and moving toward their full operational status. So that's sufficient. Thank you.
Okay, absolutely. The only other thing I was going to say while I'm off mute, Madam Chair, is just to note that Nick Darnell is not with us today, and I know he wishes he could be with us as well as where he is, but the principals in his building are, principals and teachers coming back together. And so he is on duty as assigned today. He'll be back with us tomorrow for the meeting. But I know, like, all of our educators across the state, there is a lot of preparation underway for whatever mode they are going to be utilizing for the beginning of school this year. So he's not with us for that reason. And for a different reason, Mike Kraus is not with us, but the T-House meeting unfortunately coincided with our workshop today, so I'm not able to be with them, and he's not able to be with us. But I expect that either he or Victoria will be with us tomorrow, and I think Victoria's been able to join us today to listen in on his behalf. So just a side note for members in terms of those two individuals. Otherwise, nothing else from me. It's been a great discussion. I appreciate everybody's engagement today. Looking forward to tomorrow.
Thank you, Sarah. So my script from Nathan. The purposes of the committee of the whole have been fulfilled, therefore I declare it and the board meeting adjourned. Thank you so much. Y'all have a good rest of the day, and I'll see you all tomorrow.
Thanks, Lillian.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
I only botched it slightly.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.